Call to order, the special meeting of the Frankfurt Plant Board, November 17th, 2020, at 5 o'clock pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order regarding meetings during this pandemic. We're doing this meeting live on Zoom. And with that, I'd like to ask the Secretary to call the roll.
Member Hale?
Here.
Member Cuban?
Here.
Member Mason?
Here.
Member Snyder?
Here.
Member Dutton Mitchell?
Okay, we've got a quorum to do business. First item is consider approval of the minutes for October 20th, 2020 board meeting. If everybody's had a chance to review them, are there any corrections or changes? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
All second.
Uh, we have a motion second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are adopted. Item 3.1, consider accepting financials for the month ending October 31st, 2020. Uh, Mr. Denton?
Thank you, Mr. Cuban, and good evening all to all the board members. I'd like to start on page 23 of your full PDF board packet, or this would be page one of the link in your board software. Frankfurt Plant Board does have a fiscal year end that ends June of each year. So we're looking at financials for the first four months of our fiscal year, ending October 31st, 2020. So starting on page 23, I'd like to just walk through our statement of net position, which is just another name for our balance sheet for the plant board. So looking at our assets as of October 31st, 2020, you can see there on line 65 that the plant board had $191.5 million in assets. I'd like to walk just a little bit through the changes. We present a year-over-year comparison. You can notice that we're up just under $8.4 million in assets for the year. That's an increase of 4.6% year-over-year. You can see that our, uh, we've moved cash and invest, uh, cash into our investments category. We have a, a net difference between the two of those of an increase of $3.4 million. The plant board, like all utilities, sets our rates to cover our operating expenses, what we need to run this, uh, run all of our services for our customers. Those rates also cover a major investment, uh, in our infrastructure, capital investments, also funds needed to pay down debt service, which we do have, long-term debt service on a large projects, and also to fund a sufficient cash reserve to keep the, the company stable and be there in the case of emergencies. So, uh, we have been setting rates appropriately to be able to cover, we have three large capital projects that were currently underway in all three, uh, in all three divisions. So that is a big reason for the increase in our cash. Receivables on lines 20 through 30, uh, increase, uh, you can see there, uh, just under $1.8 million. Most of, if you look over at our income statement, you'll notice year-over-year that we are down in sales, uh, through our customers, electric, water, and telecom, year-over-year. So the increase in receivables is not due to an increase in sales. It is due to increase in our past due accounts, uh, due to COVID pandemic and us putting a suspension on service disconnections. So that is, that's primarily driving all of that increase in receivables for the year. So I just wanted to point that out. You can see there on line 35, our inventory is up almost a million dollars year-over-year. Uh, as I mentioned, uh, we have three large capital projects, so that is contributing to, uh, some of that increase, and also it's just a timing difference in, in when we purchase assets and when we actually put those, uh, into service from, out of inventory. Those are the main changes in assets. Let's look at our liabilities, total liabilities as of October 31st, line 130, of just under $90 million. You can see compared to last year, it's essentially unchanged. It's a difference of $192,000 decrease. You'll notice there on lines 90 through 105, we had a decrease of $5.2 million in our long-term, uh, long-term debt. It's a good thing, $5.2 million decrease, but we had a $5 billion increase in our pension liability accounting that we have to do, uh, due to changes in our Kentucky retirement accounting, employees' retirement system. So that's pretty much off, got us to a breakeven year-over-year. Take your assets, match your liabilities, our net position, what you have left after you cover all liabilities. Net position, line 160, of just over $101.5 million for, uh, ending this month. So that's a 9.2% increase year-over-year, just up almost $8.6 million, which is a good thing. I don't cover this much, but I think it's, uh, worth, worth looking at. Line 135, investment in capital assets. This is net, uh, the capital assets less the long-term liability associated with those capital assets. So as I mentioned, paying down $5.2 million in long-term debt, uh, and those are all funded, uh, and the debt was issued to pay for large capital projects. So as we pay that debt down, I continue to invest in capital assets. That's why we're seeing that number increase year-over-year. Line 140, restriction for debt retirement. This is the amounts that we must maintain for our debt service covenants for electric and water revenue bonds as we pay those amounts down. You see that amount dropping. Line 155, the unrestricted portion, uh, up $5 million from a year ago. That pretty, kind of walks through, uh, changes in assets going up, liabilities going down. There's a difference in unrestricted right there. So total liabilities and net position equalling our assets at $191.5 million for the period. I'd be glad to walk through. Yes, sir.
Yeah, two questions. One, how much has our bad debt gone down since last month? And where are we at regarding customer notices regarding past due bills at this point?
So from September to October, we actually saw a, if I remember correctly, around a $700,000 increase in our past due, um, customer balances. There was, uh, one account that actually made up quite a bit of that difference, and that account has been, uh, paid up, which is good. So we are, we're still tracking, increasing our past due, uh, month over month right now. Hopefully, we'll be getting our numbers at, uh, here in a couple of weeks to see where we are through November. But that leads me to your next question about how the plant board is handling these past due bills. We've talked about it for several months, but I'll go through again, that back when the pandemic hit, FPB voluntarily suspended service disconnections, uh, for people that were, uh, due to COVID, uh, due to the economic turmoil that was going on and to, to help our customers out. We were then, uh, given a executive order from, from the Governor of Kentucky to, uh, we had to suspend those service disconnections, and we are, uh, have, were underneath that order until November 6th. Another order was issued by the Governor saying that we could just start service disconnections on November 6th, uh, but we must put customers into a payment plan. So all of our past due customers that have past due balances with FPB have been automatically put into a payment plan. That payment plan ranges from six months all the way up to 24 months, depending on your past due balance. So that automatically will occur, and customers can see that on their upcoming bills. There'll be a current amount due for the current month's service plus a additional amount due for the payment arrangement, giving you a total amount you must pay for the month. So that is where we are right now. We have sent letters out to any customer that has a past due balance, explaining that process, discussing the financial help that is available to them. There's several different avenues that a customer could go to get financial assistance and explaining that. We have began, definitely started getting calls and questions, which is a good thing. So we encourage our customers to give us a call if they need a little more explanation. I believe, as we mentioned, we look to resume service disconnections right after the end of 2020. So starting, uh, with the first week of January 2021, if temperatures are, are above, uh, above freezing, we would then begin, start service disconnections for any customer that does not adhere to their payment arrangement.
Has anybody got any questions for David?
So is our total still about the 3.2 million, or that has increased?
As of the, it was 3.2 as of the end of October, and we have had payments since the, since the end. I don't know the exact amount as we sit today, uh, but yes, as of the end of the month and when these financials have been presented, that amount was just over $3.2 million. We have seen a large, I know a large account, about half a million dollars behind, uh, paid. So that was definitely helpful, uh, and I know that we've had people calling and, uh, talking about our payment arrangements. So we'll definitely give you updated numbers as soon as we have those, uh, through the month of November. That's where we are on the past dues.
Okay. Any other board member have some questions to David?
Yeah, I, I assume, I guess at that next meeting, you will have some kind of projection on the percentage that you might have to cut off?
We will have, we, we need to get through another, one bill cycle to allow the customers an opportunity to pay. So it will be, um, it would be towards the end of December before we would have a number. We would look, we could give you a number, um, it would be after our December board meeting, but I could give you individual correspondence and an email to board members, giving you a projection of what that looks like and keep you up to date as, as frequently as you would like. But I can give you an update of where I know, uh, at the next December meeting, where we sit, uh, as of, as of that.
That's one kind of projection at that point. I know it's not going to be the, the absolute of the, you know, precise number, but it, just to give us some idea of approximately what percentage of, you know, might be cut off?
Absolutely. I will definitely give you an update on that. Last time I know is at the end of October. It would have been about 2,500 accounts. So we'll, we'll keep you informed for sure.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions to David?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, David, David, let me ask you a question. You, you talked about the, uh, inability to, uh, the, the fact that we don't cut folks off when freezing temperatures. Is that a, I know it's probably written in our policy somewhere. Can you extrapolate on that a little bit? Is that if, if that particular day, the temperature's below freezing, is it, is it a forecast? Or how does that, how's that handled?
Mr. Snyder, it is in our, in our tariff. I would, uh, I don't have it, I believe it is the day of and the day after, the, the day that we would disconnect and the day after disconnection, that that temperature need to maintain above freezing. So that, we usually, this is a pretty operationalized procedure, but because of the volume of past due balances and the impact right now, I, I definitely plan to keep you all much more informed of the process, um, and what this looks like. That's, but that's usually how it looks, Mr. Snyder. It's the day of and the day after, um, we.
And I think that done, David, done that apply also. That's the same rules that LGD, KU, Columbia Gas, and everybody operates under, isn't it?
Yeah, and Henshaw might be able to help. I don't know if this is part of a, of a statute or not, but, uh, I know others have similar, similar terms.
I'm, I'm not sure what, uh, what KU uses. I was at a PSC, uh, class one time, and I, I don't know that there's any regulation that sets out that temperature limit, but it, it's always been a part of the plant board processes, uh, as long as, as long as I've been here at least. And I would, I, I would just, I, I would adhere to that as well, just, it's a company policy that I, that I agree with and that I've never really looked to, looked to question much because it just makes sense to me, that you can get a lot that goes wrong when someone gets cut off in, in sub, sub-freezing temperatures.
And I'm pretty sure, I mean, it's probably just anecdotal, but I'm pretty sure over the years, um, the other, the Louisville Lexington Utilities now follow similar rule.
So, yeah, and, and Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm absolutely, I, I think it's a great rule. I, I was just, the nuts and bolts and specifics of it was what I wanted to know, but.
Yes, sir.
That sounds right, day, day and day after that time. Appreciate it.
Just, just one more question along the lines of the cutoff. I, I don't know if you have the information to tell, I guess, the, uh, I'm using the word demographic, but I'm, I'm really only meaning in the economic sense. The, the segment that, the percentage of, in an economic spread of, of how many people or where the people are that potentially could be cut off. Because I think that may inform places like, I guess, Rosam and other charitable organizations that might come in and help people. You know, I'm not looking to help someone that's, that's obviously has plenty of money, but if there are, you know, real people that are really struggling financially, uh, on economic scale, uh, I think.
David, couldn't we do some, I, for lack of a better term, it's like a scatter graph? Couldn't we do some type of, uh, like map, uh, with just kind of some shading or whatever by maybe, uh, precinct or whatever, showing just by number, not individual addresses. I would just show by area the, the density of, uh, of the past due bills now, like what Steve said, we could share with, uh, Rosam and so forth, let them know, and, uh, would kind of give us a heads up where the areas most impacted are?
Yeah, we absolutely know the service address and could plot all of those past due accounts.
Yeah, we want to protect confidentiality, but just so that we've got that kind of, uh, we see that impact by area.
Well, I, I guess the area would be, would be better than nothing, but I, I was really thinking economically, you know? I don't know when you apply to get service, if you have to, you know, divorce some, uh, income range, economic status, uh, it's been so long since I've applied.
Sure.
But, uh.
No, no, we don't, we don't keep, uh, financial information like that on our customers. The one thing we did look at that was interesting is, you know, we looked at of these past due accounts, how many of these accounts have been disconnected in the frequency of disconnection in the last 12 months? To give a little idea of, you know, for, uh, most of the accounts that are past due, the majority of those had not been disconnected in the last 12 months, which shows me, points to, that these folks were paying all along, on time, every month, never been disconnected, and then all of a sudden, we have this past due balance. To me, that would imply that, you know, these, these folks are, uh, the situation has, that there's been a factor. But we can definitely give you as, as much information as we can get from our billing system to, to give you that information, Mr. Mason.
And, and I think along those lines, I think you all have done a really good job of, of having the, the phone number and putting on social media about community action and the funds that are available there for people to get help in, in paying their bills, because there is that money out there. And I, and I think we've tried to do a pretty good job of, of getting that information out to people, that if they have a problem in paying their bills, to apply through community action for some of the money that's available for help.
Well, my motivation for the question was to, because if we, if we could talk about it at the December meeting, we can have some, uh, idea where the, the problem is and where people who have real, you know, real economic problems, then it could be, it's, it, you know, hopefully the people are watching this, this, uh, this meeting, and, and that information can get out via us through the meeting. And that's why I've asked to see if you can have something at the, uh, December meeting about, you know, a breakdown of where, you know, where the problem lies the most.
Absolutely.
Any further discussion? If not, do I have a motion to accept the financials?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Can I, can I just ask or say one more thing?
Sure.
The money with the community action, it seems like somewhere I'm remembering a December 1, was there a December 1 deadline for some of the money that the Governor had, had put out?
It wasn't the Governor, but it was that community action had that money, I think was to help with some internet or whatever, or, uh, wasn't that what they talked about that day? Was it December 1 that the funding they had, it was community action? And I thought it was regarding, uh, internet.
Okay, maybe so. I just vaguely remembered a December 1 deadline for, for some funds that they had, and I thought that's rapidly approaching, if, if we needed to get that out there to remind people.
Well, I think for a lot of these funds, it's first come, first served. So I mean, when they're gone, they're gone unless.
Right.
The Governor has any additional, uh, COVID money or whatever to release, that would be, or that Team Kentucky money, that would be the end of it. So you're right, Dawn, I mean, the sooner the, the, uh, the sooner people, if they're going to be in that situation, apply, it, it's good for them because the funds are limited. I mean, it's not, you know, it's not that there's going to be funds there, no matter what the need is all year.
Right. And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt the.
Oh, no, good, no. So we had a motion, a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most, uh, financials accepted. The next item, item 4.1, I don't think necessarily requires a vote, but maybe just to make sure, just clarification or even just, uh, for us to discuss a minute, I talked to David and Gary, and as you know, right now, we submit, uh, David submits the budget to us, uh, every year, based on what I call minor object codes, which are down to areas like commodities, utilities, supplies, things like that. And then there's major object codes, which are areas like personnel, operating, capital outlay debt. And then that, it's within those categories, within department like water, electric, and so forth, we approve the budget. And then we get the budget, we get reports every month at minor object code, so we can see what's being spent in each line compared to the budget. But to clarify that if during the year in normal operating, if, uh, financially wise, David needs to move the money within a category, for example, if within electric, he needs to move the money within the operating line, not moving money from operating to personnel, and not moving money from one department to the other, but if he needs to move money because we're spending less in supplies and maybe spending more in another area like parts or somewhere like that, they've got the flexibility to do it and to make sure that, uh, we were in agreement that that did not require a budget amendment for him to operate and make adjustments during the year within a, uh, major object code within a department. And just wanted to throw that out there and see if anybody has a problem with that or if that's in agreement with everyone.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, I, I assume, I assume that was the way we were operating. That, that certainly seems, it's fine to me. I mean, I don't think we want to micromanage to the level of any lower than a drop.
And certainly if David need to add more money into a line or whatever, in terms of to a, a, a major operating code, this only gives him the flexibility and Gary within a major object code within a department budget. So it's, you know, it'd only be those kind of changes, but obviously if he had to move money between them or put more money in or whatever, then that would need to come for us for an amendment. But if, uh, thanks, John, for that. And then Steve, Dawn, Catherine, is anybody, is that okay with you all?
I'm okay with that.
Me too.
Okay. So David, do you need any other clarification, or does that give you what you need?
No, sir, I think we understand and appreciate that.
Okay. Next item, item five is public comment. Kathy, has anybody signed up to speak?
No, sir.
Okay. The next item, item 6.1 is web comments. Did we have any comments come in?
Not since the ones, just the ones that are in the board package.
Okay. So we don't have anything outstanding at this point to address?
Uh, not to my knowledge.
Okay.
Chair?
Hello?
This is Catherine. Um, is there anybody monitoring the Facebook Live feed to see if there's any comments?
Gary, I think, is David, is David Columbia doing it?
Yes, um, I certainly can check that. I believe so, but, um, let's see. David Denton, do you know, or Kathy Lingde?
I'm looking at it right now, and there, there have been no comments made, uh, with 13 people watching.
Okay, David, could you make sure you continue to watch that during the meeting?
I sure will.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is item seven, which is department reports. And I might just add, before event, we turn it over to you to update us by department. Wanted to, uh, thank, uh, Gary, you and, and the whole staff, and maybe Ben can highlight a little more of what happened on, over this weekend on our fiber in that downtown, and the effort everybody went to to get all the businesses and residents and everybody back up in really record time. So with this, turn it over to you, Ben.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, board. Um, yeah, I'll, uh, I'm going to start with telecom, which is pages 109 through 112 in your board package, and then, and I'll go ahead and briefly talk a little bit about, uh, what happened. I think it was from the night, I believe, or Saturday night. So we had a, uh, model get into some of the electric system, and it, um, caused some components to melt, and those components got down into the telecom system and created issues there. And so the telecom department had, um, close to 20 hours worth of work to try to restore those services in a particular area downtown. So they contacted, um, the major businesses and the things in those areas and immediately started working on that. They worked completely, um, non-stop through the night and had everything back up, replaced some fiber, some areas, got everything back up and operational again by, I believe it was 2:30 or so on Sunday. So, uh, that is the way it works sometimes, uh, your whole, your day, everything gets put on hold and you have to come and, and work on the systems. That's what we're used to doing. That is the, that's the nature of the business, and we're certainly about to do that when that happens and make sure it gets back on for our customers. We understand how important the services we provide are to our customers. We take that very seriously, and, uh, we put all hands on deck and everybody do what we can when needed to restore those types of services. So that was a fairly, uh, a fairly large issue at that particular location. It didn't affect the vast majority of our customers, but certainly if you were in that downtown area, you know, if you were affected, it obviously mattered greatly to you. So we, uh, want to do everything we can to get those folks back on. So I will say that especially the telecom department, uh, they really worked hard all night long, a large, large group of them were all involved in that, a lot of fiber splicing, and, uh, really appreciate the work they do, but that's just what I've seen out of those kind of folks in the 20-plus years I've been here. So they continue to always impress me, and I'm always proud to work with them. So to move on with the rest of the telecoms report, um, they have received most of the head-in equipment, not, not everything out of the system, but most of the head-in equipment for fiber-to-the-home components that they're, uh, starting to put together and get operational. So they're working on the process of installing more of that. The satellite dish farm that was out at, uh, the Tanglewood area and reservoirs, um, that being moved, as you're aware, a part of that reservoir project. And so those are, uh, mostly complete, where they're completing the hub that the electric and the fiber connectivity happens in the middle of that, so satellite dishes. So that's going along pretty well. And then they're always working on, um, node segmentations or splitting nodes and doing things, depending on bandwidth out in the areas. If we see high usage, then sometimes we have to go back and split those segments out and, and make more provisions for additional bandwidth. So that kind of stuff is happening. They've been working on some of those. That, that's a routine thing that happens from time to time. And then the electric report, that's on pages 1, 115 to 119 in your packet. And then beyond those statistics that you're used to seeing, um, they're continuing to work downtown on four different reconductor projects that they're working on down there. And then just a little note on AMI, we, um, have the test system equipment ordered. It should be in before too long, and then we'll have that up and running, we think, next month. If the testing goes well, we should be again to start with some limited initial field deployments, um, of about 500 meters or so in the spring of next year. All that stuff is kind of along the lines of how it's laid out in our AMI project, but that's going along so far pretty well. Again, we're at the very early stages, but that's going, going fine. The secret report on pages 121 through 123, uh, just note that we made, uh, $24,558 for the month of September, and that gives us a calendar year, we're up to $533,000. And so that's, that's going well, that's positive. Then the next would be water distribution. They're on pages 127 through 129. And beyond the statistics that you have in front of you, the, uh, construction crews, they completed a new eight-inch water main installation out on Blue Ridge Drive, uh, road repairs, the field cleanup and stuff is complete on that. And then the, the crews have started on West Main to replace the existing 12-inch water main at the intersection of Ann Street. They're about 60% complete on that project, and we're hoping when that does, when that completes up and the gas, the gas company moves out of the way and Second Street area that will move in along behind them and continue working on the Tiger Grant portion there. The contractor crews, they've completed painting the exterior of the 127 tank. Now they're working on the inside. So that project is going very well, and we've been happy with the work they've done so far. So that's progressing along. And then, uh, finally, certainly not least, but the final report here is the water treatment plan on page 131. You see those normal statistics. And, um, we're in the design phase of the ammonia feed system project out there at the water treatment plant. Again, that's part of a budget project, but that's going pretty well, and things are moving along pretty well. Like everyone, we deal with, with, you know, COVID issues, you have COVID, uh, quarantines, you have issues where people get it, and people who are around folks that get it, just like everyone's dealing with. We've been able to operate and make adjustments as we need to, and, uh, we continue to, to operate and move through those, uh, type of things. So all in all, things are going pretty well. It's been kind of a bizarre year, but I think we're doing pretty well. So, uh, that concludes my operations report. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Anybody got questions for Ben?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
David, I mean, uh, David, I mean, uh, Gary, did you want to mention update on KIMI?
Yes, uh, uh, KYM had the board meeting last time. Uh, I think one thing they voted for is, uh, try to submit a study to MISO. Try to have a more transmission capacity than they can access the market after twenty twenty-two, particularly the hundred megawatts, the energy contract grow out, the hundred megawatt energy old co-contract grow out. And also, uh, continue work on the, the contract with solar, which is the fifty-four megawatt supposed schedule line on twenty twenty-two also. But the project overall is eighty-six. So i- it is a part of a resource planning process. Um, as I know, uh, the KYM currently does not have a plan to build any new generation facility in Kentucky in next couple of years.
Yeah, I know there's been that concern or not concern, but I know we've gotten some comments about was KIMI moving in that direction? And I wanted you to make sure you update that, that no decision's been made regarding going in that direction by KIMI.
No, and also I don't think there's a plan in near future to build. I would never say never to never compared to go to dark for reliability, we will do. But I don't think that's the case. So access more from market, access more transmission capability, it's the direction we would like to go.
Okay. Does any, is there any questions for Gary about regarding that? Okay, uh, based on that report, do we, we don't need to, those are just information, so we don't need to take a motion on those department reports. That's just information. That's correct, isn't it? Yes. Okay, the next one is item eight point one. Consider stop loss coverage and plan changes for twenty twenty-one on the employee health plan. Is Neshel with us?
Yes.
And speaking of that, I think congratulations are in order for you, aren't they?
Yes, thank you.
Well, congratulations on your, uh, your new job.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I would like to welcome a guest today, Lisa Stam. Lisa is with our health, with Cheryl Morgan, our health plans benefit consulting company. She'll be available to answer any questions you may have. Staff recommends the board consider approving renewal with Pan American for the specific and aggregate stop loss coverage for the twenty twenty-one FPB employee health plan. Our consultant Cheryl Morgan searched for competitive pricing and received responses from six stop loss carriers. Our current carrier, Pan American, offered the best overall option for the stop loss coverage when additional laser liability is considered. See pages one thirty-five and one thirty-six for the proposal spreadsheet included in the detailed page section. To reduce premiums expenses, Cheryl Morgan recommends that we accept the additional one hundred thousand specific deductible. In addition, staff also asked the board to consider several health plan changes effective January first, twenty twenty-one. To consider approving treatment of obesity to allow charges for medically necessary non-surgical services related to weight loss, including treatment for obesity and morbid obesity. Charges related to weight loss reduction programs such as Jenny Craig or Weight Watchers or any surgical treatment related to weight loss is not covered under this plan. We are also asking the board to, um, accept changes to the chiropractic copayments. To change the chiropractic copayments to twenty dollars for the standard PPO plan to be in compliance with the Kentucky insurance mandates. The mandate requires that the chiropractor copays are no higher than primary care office visits. Are there any questions?
And as I understand, Neshel, just to clarify, tell me, correct me if I'm wrong, on the treatment of obesity, what we're basically dealing with there is staff who went and went to a visit with their normal, with their regular doctor who talked to them about weight loss or whatever, that would, would be an allowable covered service. So basically, we're just clarifying that that's still allowable and is, is allowable service. But these other areas, like you mentioned, the Jenny Craig, Weight Watchers, or those type things are not covered. And this really isn't so much as a major change, it's more of a clarification. Is that right?
Correct. We were having issues where members were going to see their physician. And if they mentioned or if the physician, uh, recommended diet or nutrition, because our plan currently, um, did not cover obesity, those visits or services were being, um, denied.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions from Neshel about this? David, are these expenses, what we're looking for that in the chart there, estimated expenses for twenty twenty-one? Uh, in terms of the budget that we adopted for this current fiscal year, we've got an increase going from two point eight to three point one four. So we'd basically be about, what, half of that would be occurring in this current budget year? So is that within your budget that you put, that you, uh, that we approved?
You know, we could be okay. You know, the biggest part of this, uh, of healthcare expense are claims. So if we have a good year, people stay healthy, which we are seeing. Um, actually, we're doing so many more healthy, uh, healthy, uh, tasks these days that, uh, we're seeing even less of the common illnesses. So I think, uh, I'm hopeful that we'll be on track even with these changes.
Okay, good. Any questions for David or Neshel? Okay, do I have a motion, uh, to approve the stop loss coverage plan that, uh, in eight point one?
Don't move.
We got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Plans approved. Uh, next item is item eight point two. Consider long-term disability coverage with Minnesota Life effective January first, twenty twenty-one. Neshel?
Staff recommends the board consider approving renewal with Minnesota Life for long-term disability insurance effective January first of twenty twenty-one. Our consultant Cheryl Morgan searched for competitive pricing from eight, um, eight carriers. All carriers except Minnesota Life declined to submit a quote. Please see the detailed, um, quotes in the detail pages.
Why do you think, Neshel, no one wanted to bid on this?
They couldn't be competitive with the, um, current pricing that Minnesota Life, um, presented to us.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions with Neshel? Okay, do I have a motion?
Don't move.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, disability coverage plan, uh, in eight point two is approved. Thanks, Neshel.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa.
Item eight point three, consider accepting the minutes of the May twelfth, twenty twenty cable advisory committee. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, got the minutes from the May twelfth, uh, special meeting of the cable advisory committee, uh, for your, uh, review and acceptance. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any discussions for Harvey or questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the cable advisory committee.
Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
We got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, uh, eight point three, except we've accepted the minutes. Item eight point four, Harvey, consider approving First Amendment to master opt-in retransmission consent agreement with Scripps. Harvey?
Yes, sir. Um, staff and the cable advisory committee recommend the approval of this First Amendment to the master opt-in retransmission consent agreement with Scripps. Uh, if you recall at the last meeting, um, the board executed a, uh, retransmission consent agreement, uh, that was negotiated between NCTC and Scripps. Um, we had, uh, reached out to Scripps and asked for this amendment to allow us additional time to launch, uh, the two additional multicast channels that were required in the agreement. And, uh, we were able to, um, complete that amendment and it's presented to you, uh, tonight. We have, uh, we requested and received eighteen months, uh, a time to, to launch these new channels. Um, that will allow the, the operations, uh, team to, uh, to make some adjustments on how we, you know, have our channel lineup and, and how they're placed and, uh, to, to limit disruption and, and impact on our customers. So, um, I'm happy to answer any questions you have on this amendment.
Okay. Do you have any discussion, any questions for Harvey? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, seeing no opposition, eight point four is approved. Item eight point five, Harvey, consider approving discovery communications agreement?
Thanks, sir. Uh, cable advisory committee and staff recommend the approval of a standard NCTC agreement for discovery communications. Uh, this, this agreement includes the discovery networks, uh, the discovery digital networks, and then also the former Scripps networks, uh, Scripps and discovery, uh, merged, uh, a couple of years ago. And so this agreement is combining those two, those networks, the former Scripps networks are the, uh, uh, HGTV food network, travel channel. Uh, so there are seventeen networks included in this agreement. Uh, I'm not going to run through all of them, but they're presented in the, uh, in the agenda if you'd like to review them. Uh, the agreement runs through October thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. Uh, the, the average increase across, uh, all the networks is, uh, on classic cable was right at seven percent, which is well under what we had budgeted. Uh, and the year-over-year increases after that, uh, averaged about six percent a year. Um, and the average increase on preferred cable networks was right at six percent, uh, again below our budgeted numbers. Um, one thing just to point out, this agreement allows FPB an opportunity, which is pretty rare in our agreement. The ability to, to move a channel from classic cable to preferred cable. Um, and basically what that, what that does is it allows us to shift that cost from everybody to just the folks that want to pay to, to receive that channel. Um, and so the cable advisory committee recommends that move, um, and staff does it as well. Um, and once we execute this agreement, uh, we'll, we'll work to, to make that move. Um, you know, probably, well, I don't want to commit to any time, but sometime in the future. Uh, and so what that will do is shift that cost from the cable programming pass-through fee for the cable customers onto just the preferred cable customers. So, um, I'm happy to answer any questions on this discovery agreement.
Any questions for Harvey?
Uh, yes, so does, does that mean that the ones who don't pick up that channel, uh, rate will go down?
So, I mean, wh- what happens is as this will sort of shake out at the end of the year, when the new rates come in, all the other networks' rates will increase, but we'll offset that basically by the removal of this channel. The increase will be less for all the other channels. But nobody will be paying for the channel that's not receiving it, I guess, at this point.
Does that answer your question, Steve?
Thanks a lot, yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Harvey? Okay, uh, seeing no other questions, all those in favor of, of approving the discovery communications agreement, uh, do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Seeing no, seeing no, no, uh, no's, uh, it's, uh, discovery communication agreements approved. Item eight point six, consider approval of establishing the rate for fiber service. Uh, establishing rate for advanced video application service and updating section ten of the tariff. Harvey, discuss. And this is a matter that we previously had a public hearing on. Harvey?
Yes, sir. Uh, so we started this process two months ago, um, when we asked for the public hearing. We held that public hearing, uh, back on October twentieth. Um, we didn't receive any public comments at that meeting. We've not received any public comments, uh, since that meeting, um, either via email or phone call or, or carrier pigeon. Um, but, uh, just to reiterate what, what, what the proposed, uh, rates were, we're, we're establishing the rate for the fiber service. Uh, the two new speeds and, and the pricing for those speeds, uh, for, for the residential and the business customers. Um, and, and then the, the rate for the, the advanced video application service, uh, which will be five dollars a month for the folks to take that service. Um, and then finally, section ten of the tariff, which, which, uh, uh, reads to our, our modem service, all of our internet services and, and as technology has changed, just really the, uh, the services that we're offering and the language that's used, we just needed to reflect it to our current offering. So, um, I'm happy to answer any questions you guys might have on, uh, these three, uh, items.
Did we ever get any, uh, further comments that came in on those, Harvey?
No, sir.
Wasn't there a comment in the web comment section from someone on the equipment necessary for fiber? Do you want to talk about that a little bit, Harvey, and explain why we're asking people to use our equipment?
Yeah, sure. No, thanks for bringing that up. I, I'd, um, forgotten about that. And, and Adam, if Adam's here, if he wants to chime in, he, he's free to do that. He may have some, some other perspective. But, yeah, I think for the most part, uh, with these, these higher speeds, we, we want to make sure that the folks are getting what they're paying for, uh, especially with, um, the more wireless devices, the more, um, equipment that folks are using in the home. Uh, we want to make sure that, that we put the sort of top-of-the-line stuff that we can put in there, which, uh, is our whole home wifi, our ERO product, which we've had a lot of success with, uh, so far with our cable modem customers. And so, um, we also have the ability to, to help troubleshoot customers, uh, with that equipment better. So, uh, we just, we think that's going to be a better experience for our customers and, and help us, um, you know, help them, uh, get, get the speeds and, and service that they're paying for.
Thanks.
Uh, why, why wouldn't you just set a standard of, 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 of quality of equipment, uh, that, that someone must have in order to buy their own?
Um, yeah, I mean, I think there is, um, I think the idea is that having us been able to, to know exactly what's in the home, and again, uh, the tools that, that, that the equipment that we put in gives us, uh, from the back office management. And, um, I think really is important for us. Again, we're, we're offering speeds that we've never offered before. Um, you know, we, we want to make sure that, that folks are getting the things that they're paying for. And that, and that's, you know, I, I don't think, um, I don't think this wouldn't be something we could revisit in the future if we felt like, you know, uh, it wasn't working. But I think at this point, we feel as we roll this out that, that it's a, that it's an important part of it.
I think to Steve's question, I think, Adam, I'd asked you the other day something along those lines. And you talked about during this initial deployment, testing and installation, that it would, it would make it a lot simpler or not simpler, but in order for us to troubleshoot and make sure everything's working the way to know exactly that all the equipment that's being deployed is standard. And that we know that if there's problems, we know it's not because of someone else's equipment or wherever that's causing the problem. Is that correct?
Correct. It's, it's, it's a situation where, you know, initially this initial rollout, I think it's best, and we go a lot smoother if we knew all the parts and pieces up to where we're going to start, stop troubleshooting. And you see that today in the board report as far as trouble calls. A lot of trouble calls we have, a lot of issues our customer have is equipment on their end. We, you know, upgrade modems and, you know, their wifi coverage is spotty in the house. The units that we're expecting to go with fiber to the home, where we have confidence that they work, we have the ability to troubleshoot a little farther to tell if somebody's device has a poor connection versus, you know, a speed problem. So I think initially, in the beginning, we should definitely, uh, have customers use our equipment. And as things progress, maybe that's something we can look at down the road. As newer equipment comes on the market, that, uh, plant board can have confidence in.
Steve, did that address, uh, the concern you had?
Well, I mean, I understand the logic, but again, why not just require them to have some equipment? I mean, when you go out and look at, at, at the other internet providers, they, they require, if you look at a router per se, they, they, they tell you which service it will work on, uh, or it won't work on. A modem, it tells, they'll tell you that. So to, to this man's comment, uh, whomever's comment, he's he's talked about that he has superior, superior equipment, and a lot of people probably do have that, the same thing uh, that, uh, that you're talking about here. And again, I, I don't, I, I don't want to have a, a roadblock in front of somebody getting this service if they've already invested in, in the same equipment that you're going to require, that you're going to offer them through a rental. And I mean, that's, that's really, it's a roadblock right now, I think. If people, some people have gone out to purchase real good equipment, they're probably going to be the ones that are going to want the fiber and the high, you know, the high speeds. And now they may say, well, you know, give up the equipment or take the service.
I mean.
That's a, that's another day's discussion. I mean, I'm not, you know.
Adam, could you, for the next meeting, along the lines of what Steve's talking about, talk with Steve some and give us some more information? Continue where you're going now, but bring us back some more information about alternatives, products, things out there, and kind of give us a little better idea of the landscape out there?
Um, um, sure. I'll take care of it.
And then we can have this follow-up, if that's okay with you, Steve, then we can follow this up next time. And give us an idea of what this equipment costs, what other equipments out there, and kind of give us an idea of what impact we're looking at here.
I'm, I'm just merely making a point. I mean, if, I mean, I'm fully supportive if the, if, if, if the plant board wants to go that route initially, so.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay, if, uh, if, is there any further discussion on this? If not, uh, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the establishment of fiber service, video application service, and updated section X, X of the tariff.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Next item is item eight point seven, approving the NCTC TEGNA retransmission consent agreement. And Harvey will touch on it, but to make sure everybody, um, realizes this has a, a little different provision than we normally look at it. Again, this is, we can approve it with or without this provision, is apparently there's a deadline coming up on this side agreement regarding, uh, the WHAS transmission. And if everybody's in agreement, assuming it meets the same requirements that we currently enjoy, uh, with that WHAS retransmission, uh, it would, we would, we basically at this point be authorized and uh, to enter into that. If it's not what we currently have, then we'd have to have a special meeting, but otherwise, we basically are saying that if it meets everything contingent on that, this TEGNA agreement, and specifically WHAS, that we would be approving it. So Harvey, you want to take it away?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Guban. So the, uh, this is the NCTC agreement for the retransmission consent carriage of WHS in Louisville. Um, they have completed the, the, the master agreement with TEGNA for all of their network, all of their broadcasters. And they're, they're currently working on a side letter, uh, that would uh, apply to the plant board and a handful of other operators that have, um, certain carriage, um, agreements with, with TEGNA currently, and they, they would maintain those existing carriage, uh, agreements. So the, the, the agreement that is currently, um, presented does not have those, and so we're essentially waiting for the side letter, but the deadline to enter into this master agreement is December second. So um, what we are, um, I guess what we're asking for is for you guys to approve this NCTC agreement contingent upon the completion of this side letter agreement, uh, that would guarantee FPB to continue to pay its current rate for WHAS, uh, for the term of this new agreement. Um, I think I, I think Mr. Guban and I together can explain that, but if it's not clear, please, uh, please feel free to ask the question.
Staff, and you.
I will, I, I will say that the NCTC is confident that they will get the side letter agreement done this week. It just, we just could not, we couldn't have it in time for the, uh, the meeting, uh, tonight.
And, and Harvey, Harvey, that falls back to the fact that the, the WHS is a Louisville station, it's not one, not in our primary area, correct?
Right, right. It's an out-of-market station, and so with those situations, you often get special rates and, and affordances that you wouldn't have in market, and we want to make sure we continue that.
So, so you want to, you want to motion then, uh, so if we, if we do this contingent upon the letter, if the letter doesn't get done, um, we're, we're, we will not get on the set by the second deadline on the second, correct?
Correct, yeah. If we don't have the side letter in place by the deadline, we, we, we won't opt in until we have the side letter, period. But yeah, that would be the, um, the motion we'd be looking for, the, the, the language at the end of the, of the digest item involved. Yep.
Any other questions for Harvey? Okay, all those in favor? I mean, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, if, if it's in order, I would consider that we, uh, approve the NCTC, uh, TEGNA retransmission agreement contingent upon the establishment of a side letter with the special rates we have for WHAS.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, agreement's approved with that, uh, with that contingent's language on it? Item eight point eight, accept minutes of landscape committee. Dawn and David Billings, Dawn, you're limited to, uh, three hours.
Go for it, David.
Okay, thank you, absolutely. Uh, the landscape committee met on November ninth. The committee approved the attached landscape plan that you can find on page two thirty-three of the board, uh, package. Staff asked that the board move to incorporate their recommendations regarding the painting color, the planting plans, and the retaining wall blocks into the final design plans and accept the minutes of the committee. The landscape committee minutes can be found on page two thirty-one. The retaining wall texture color on page two thirty-five. The color, the selected color for the reservoir on page two thirty-seven. And also included a letter from TNAI on page two thirty-nine.
As I understand it, Dawn, all this falls within the budget that we adopted for the reservoir project, and this staff, our staff have reviewed it for all technical reasons to make sure it's, it's technically, uh, doesn't interfere with any of the design or technical aspects of the reservoir, and that your committee that you met with are all in agreement, uh, in terms of, uh, this approach and these recommendations. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I mean, I'd just like to say, I think you and David and everybody else that was involved, it's, uh, it's incredible, all of it, everything you've done on this to, uh, bring this to this point, and have this all resolved so that work can begin next year and all this has been done. So I just want to compliment you and everybody for everything you've done to, to get this resolved.
Well, thanks. Everybody worked really well together. The Nate Van Sickle and the people with the Tanglewood Neighborhood Association were very cooperative. Our staff was very cooperative, and it was a, a really pleasure to work on this committee because it was just so congenial and, and so easy for everyone to work and, and make decisions. It was great.
Well, thank you. I'll thank everybody, all, everybody that's involved, both the people in Tanglewood and all of our staff that work so hard on this. Um, does anybody have any questions for Dawn or David? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Well, I don't know if it's right for me to make a motion or not, since I was.
Well, I think you can, yeah.
And I make a motion to accept the landscape committee, committee minutes, and, uh, the planting plant update, retaining wall texture, reservoir color, uh.
Wait, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We got a motion second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Accepted the minutes. Thank you all again, Dawn and David. Uh, next item, eight point nine, consider approval of change order number one on the US one twenty-seven tank painting project with Sam Estes Painting Company for eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. Mr. Billings?
Yes, sir. Uh, just this last September, the board awarded the project to Sam Estes in the amount of two hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars. The purpose of the project was to repair and repaint the existing half-million gallon elevated tank on the west side of town on one twenty-seven. The original contract required patchwork and alterations to the existing ladder. Once the project began, it became evident that a new ladder was a better solution. Change order number one is for providing a new OSHA-compliant ladder, as well as new conduit and wiring for an electric circuit to power a tank mixing system that we're going to put in on a later date. The change order will increase the contract amount by eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars, but will not change the substantial completion date. Uh, if approved, the new contract amount will total two hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars. If approved, change order number one represents three point six percent of the original contract price. Our budget for the project is four hundred thousand dollars. Staff recommends that the board approve change order number one with Sam, Sam Estes Painting Company.
And I think, uh, David, you indicated as they get further into the project and that, we might, we don't know yet, there might be one other change order if they find any other damage or anything else they have to repair. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. After, upon sandblasting the interior of the tank, they found some pits that had to be repaired. We obtained pricing for that, but it was not included in the original contract, so I do expect a change order for that. In addition, uh, our radio system quit working. We have a antenna on that tank. Uh, our, uh, communications people had to send a tank climbing crew to go out there and make some repairs. I don't expect that to be a big-ticket item. Uh, that might, that would not be included in a change order, but that might hit our budget as well.
Okay. Any other questions on, uh, David regarding this change order or the, or the overall project? If not, do we have a, a motion on the change order?
So moved.
Motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Change orders approved. Next item is number nine. Uh, I talked to Gary and recommended we put this on here. As you all are aware, uh, Franklin County has moved into, uh, the, uh, a red county. And obviously, we're going into the winter months, and we're not sure, you know, what we're looking at. And previously, we had given Gary authority for, what was it, Gary, three months?
Yes.
To take such action regarding personnel actions or policies, procedures, uh, to manage things that came up as a result of the COVID status, and to make those decisions, obviously keep us informed. But in terms of those types of management decisions to give Gary the flexibility to operate, and I think, Gary, you kind of want to give us an update on kind of where you are, where you think we're going, and I guess it'd be, uh, reauthorizing you or reaffirming that you have that authority for, I guess, uh, another three months to operate during that time, and then we can revisit it if we need to.
Yes.
So you want to update us, Gary?
Yes, I will give a brief update, and, uh, and David, uh, can help me on that too. Uh, we are resume kind of normal operation construction since June first. Even we have some customer service still working from home, half-half, but they are just stationed at home, but still on the phone, uh, provide a service to our customer. And our line crew, construction, water, telecommunications, construction operation is all back to norm in the, since June first. Uh, but right now, since we are in the red zone in our county, we do expect there could be more case, could be affect our employee. And until now, I want to report to the board, all our employee, we do have some few case tests positive by our employee, but we do not have internal transmission between the employee until now. We definitely did not do it. We always want to make sure, uh, our employee all understand, uh, we follow the procedure policy very well. Uh, but I appreciate that you burned this up, so, because uncertainty, we hope we don't have to call a special meeting if we need to. Certainly, I will update you before we make any decision. We have a committee, we have a meeting regularly, uh, from HR, uh, legal, safety, and also the management. We review that every week. Uh, if there's a need to change on policy, I will definitely communicate with you first. All you can give me authority to is, uh, we do not have a call, a special meeting. I would update you before we do that, and also next board meeting, I will, uh, briefing what we did, if you authorize me.
Yeah, and I think the biggest thing, I think, Gary, that I understood from you and Ben was, you know, we're still doing insulation, you know, in the homes, and then we have three major projects going on. And this could, this could slow some of that work up and lead to some restrictions on in the home in order to protect both our employees and protect residents where we're doing work.
We continue what's allowed every day, and the management update me, uh, when we necessarily pull that trigger to protect the health of our employee or, and also residents. But meanwhile, we also understand the internet service, cable, electrical communication. I mean, particularly today, internet cable is a very, very critically important, particularly internet for the, uh, children's study and, of education, and also for the people working from home. So we have to wait that very carefully to, uh, walk into the, I mean, customers' home, we only do that absolutely needed because we do not want to interrupt their service. So, but we continue to review that every day. The management will be recommending to me so if we need to pull the trigger. But before we do that, I definitely report to you.
Okay, if everybody's in agreement, then I would, I guess I would like, uh, if we could have a motion to give Gary the authority from a management standpoint in terms of operational decisions regarding personnel policies, scheduling work and so forth, uh, during this COVID attack, and, you know, keep us informed if he needs to, if we need to have a special meeting, but if not, to give Gary the flexibility to operate during the next ninety days as we see what happens in terms of the governor's orders, maybe local mandates or whatever. Uh, could I get a motion on that?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I have a que, I have a question.
Sure.
Uh, Gary, would this also include things like closing down the lobby completely that we've done in the past, and will we get to that point?
Yes, currently, actually, uh, we are, we have a drive-through open for our customer, and also we have the employee man, I mean, our phone system, so customer always can call us. And meanwhile, also we have the system, employee, I mean, customer can come in if they need to walk into lobby. We do have a system in place like almost schedule them because we want to prevent, uh, multiple, many people come in the same time. We still have that available to customer if they need it. Uh, but most we prefer, definitely we can go through the, either internet or phone. Uh, we can solve all the issue custom pets.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Chairman, if it's in order, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to empower the general manager to take whatever steps necessary to, uh, uh, make any changes to personnel or, uh, uh, program activities to, uh, in response to the COVID pandemic for the next ninety days.
Okay, do, uh, is there a second?
Second. Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Well, just also, I think tomorrow, the governor is supposed to be coming out with some new restrictions, so we just might want to pay attention to that and see how that affects us in the future.
So Gary, you did an excellent job, well, you and the entire staff did a great job those first ninety days, and um, I think, you know, you've proven that, um, your judgment, that can do a good job on this and keep us informed, and if we need to get together, let us know, and if not, um, just handle the day-to-day things as you see fit to both protect our employees and our customers.
Thank you.
Well, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Seeing none? Uh, I don't know what we just did to you, Gary, but you got it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, Gary, under informational item, do you have any general manager comments?
Only thing I like to mention is the customer, we do have a percentage of customer like behind on their bill. I would really like to encourage them to apply the governor's fund. I would really like to encourage them to apply the governor's fund for the, uh, for utility helps. Those information available on our website and also we send a letter to individual customer. Um, we also have a cable ten to, you know, uh, try to run that information many times. Uh, just like, uh, uh, Ms. Chairman, you mentioned that we, the fund is very limited, I believe. Also, it's a first come, for sure. So we really encourage people to apply those. Uh, fifty million dollars sounds like really big, but compared to need at the whole Kentucky, I still believe it was a very small percentage.
Yes. Uh, next item is request permission, uh, to go into a, a closed session. So I, I would like to call, uh, a motion to go into closed session pursuant to KRS sixty-one point eight one oh one C, discuss pending or proposed litigation regarding a contract matter, subcontractor lien and a PSC matter. Do you have a motion?
Don't move.
A second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're going into closed session. You want to tell us, Gary, when we're ready to proceed?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we're back, we're back on the record, uh, we're out of closed session. Uh, I look to Mr. Snyder for a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we, uh, direct, uh, council to, uh, act, uh, according to the instructions given in the closed session regarding these matters.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion's adopted. Uh, next item business is adjournment. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody, and have a good Thanksgiving. Be safe.
Thank you all. Have a good Thanksgiving.